Duranty?
Present.
Folks?
Present.
Hopkins?
Present.
Rappaport?
Present.
Richards?
Present.
Rounds is excused. Swokis?
Present.
Is that how you say it? Sorry. Yeah, okay, cool. Stachow?
Present.
Okay, Chair, we have a call.
Thank you very much, Administration. At this time, we have our approval of minutes on our agenda. Once again, Administration, please roll call.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, my apologies.
I have a correction.
Recognize Commissioner Swokis.
For the purpose of these meeting minutes since we elected new officers, I think we need to have the motion for the election of the Vice Chairman or Chairperson and the Secretary on here, that we did that, so that there is no question that they were duly elected. Because that's usually how it's done, that way with council, it's done that way with all of the others. I just want to remain consistent with the city and the administration.
Clarification. The... Those officers were elected in the January meeting and...
Last meeting, we elected a Vice Chairperson and myself as Secretary.
Correct.
That was done last meeting, because I wasn't on the...
I understand. I understand what you're saying now. I was a little bit confused. There were two officers that were elected in the January meeting and two that were delayed to the February meeting. And as I understand, that they are not properly noted on the...
Correct.
On the initial...
On the February meeting minutes for February 6th.
The ones that were mailed, as I understood them.
Right, and I don't see them on here as...
Okay. To the Administration from the Chair, were the meeting minutes properly adjusted and resubmitted to the members?
There is election of offices on Page 3, Vice Chair and Secretary. I believe what's being asked is that the motion and support be added? Is that what you're asking for?
That's correct.
Okay, sure.
Very good.
That could be added. If the Planning Commission wants to... First, you need a motion and support, but if there is that, you can just add that to the motion, that the motion and support from the previous meeting be added to the minutes.
Indeed. The orders of the day are recognized as proper. So if, by way of information, there has been an adjustment to the meeting minutes, do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Motion to support.
As amended.
So moved.
Recognizing Commissioner Swokis for the motion and Commissioner Stachow for the second. Now roll call, please.
All right, roll call to approve the February 6 meeting minutes with the amendments stated on the records. Duranty?
Stayed.
Folks?
Stayed.
Hopkins? Were you here, Hopkins? I'm sorry.
I was.
Okay.
He said sustain, not abstain.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds is absent. Swokis? Swokis, sorry. Stachow?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, our citizen comments. At this time, we invite anybody who would like to make a general comment, not pertaining to one of our action items, or would like to bring something to our attention for us to add to our agenda, now would be the opportunity to do that. Anybody on my right? Anybody on my left? Recognizing Delano. Hi, Delano.
How you doing?
Please come to the podium.
Yes, thank you for having me here. I just wanted to make a quick note here to the Administration on the website for the Planning Board meeting for today. Last month, it didn't have a time, it just said all day, that the meeting was all day.
Okay.
Had to go back to January to find out that it was from 6 to 8, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay.
Calendar adjustment. But thank you, everyone. Good to be here.
Thank you very much, Delano. Once again, anybody on my left? Seeing none. Our first item that we have on our action agenda is case number 1051K, proposed land division for the southeast corner of Middlebelt and Ann Arbor Trail, submitted by Samar S. Alhadidi. Administration, can you tell us a little bit about the case number 1051K?
Sure, thank you, Chair. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Ann Arbor Trail and Middlebelt. It's highlighted in yellow on your screen. The overall property comprises just under four acres. It's currently zoned CB1, low intensity commercial business. Most of you are familiar. It's developed with the Arbor Town Square Shopping Center, which is currently completely vacant, with the exception of this outlot, which is not really part of this conversation. Former Burger King turned into Hookah Lounge a couple years ago. The petitioner today is proposing to split, is proposing a split in order to revert the property back to its original condition prior to the split approved on January 19, 2021. I'll show you what that looked like in a bit and what's being proposed. The original condition of the property prior to that split in January of 2021 contained two parcels, essentially what's exactly up on your screen right now. This is an old parcel map that I'm using. There is a proposed charter school on the parcel that you're going to be reviewing the split for today. That's the need for the split and why it's being requested. If this is approved, the charter school will come back before you for special land use approval at a later date. At this point in time, the charter school is being reviewed by the state for its approvals. Once all that is clear, and if this is approved, then it'll come back before you. Okay. Previous to the January 19, 2021 split, this is what the makeup of the lot looked like. Parcel A on your left-hand side, which included the Burger King and the small building here on the south side. And Parcel B contained the former Sears Hardware Building over here on the east/right-hand side. That parcel or that split/combination was approved on January 19, again in 2021, which created one parcel that encompassed this large retail strip building here plus the Sears Hardware Store. It separated out that Burger King parcel on its own to accommodate the Hookah Lounge, and it created a third parcel down here where that small building is located in the south. That's what was approved January 19, 2021. Today, the petitioner is coming before you to essentially split this parcel 1 into 2 to, again, separate the Sears Hardware Building from this long retail plaza here. And this is where the charter school is being proposed. That's essentially what you're approving. If you decide to do so, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The Administration and Planning Department are recommending approval, and the petitioner is here to answer the questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the petitioner in the audience? Please identify yourself, rise to the podium.
My name's Samir Alhadidi, and this is my manager.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Mimo DeBren. I work with Dr. Hadidi. I'm the Business Manager for the Samir and Janet Hadidi Associates, the ownership of this property that we are referring to.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything to add to the presentation by the Administration? Anything you'd like the audience or the panel to be aware of?
Only that this particular parcel split, the whole intention is to be able to market the property for more buyers and to be able to attract buyers that can't necessarily afford the entire parcel, so in order to splitting it up and making it more marketable for more prospective buyers to be able to hopefully fill up the building and bring it up to what it really needs to be brought up to.
Thank you very much. This is not a public hearing, but we still do offer an opportunity. You may have a seat. We'll probably call you back up to answer some concerns or questions that the council might have. If any citizens would like to comment on the proposal, this would be your opportunity to do that. Anybody on my right? Sir in the white, are you indicating? No. Anybody on my left? Seeing none. I'll open it up to the commission. Anybody on my right wish to speak on this matter? Anybody on my left? Recognizing Commissioner Stachow.
Yes, hi. Good evening. You just mentioned that you're thinking of splitting this property because it'll be...
Marketable. You know, and much more appealing. Was there intentions of putting a school on this property originally? Or are you just strictly asking for the division and just selling it outright?
Well, the ownership has the intention of splitting the property...
If you could come to the podium, please.
May I, please, rise to the podium?
Okay, thank you.
We need to take advantage of the microphones. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The ownership felt that by splitting the property, we would give, you know, more buyers the opportunity to consider it, and it would be more affordable. We found that with that parcel being at a size that it is, it was not affordable for any owner-used buyers. So at that time, I can't really comment on the what is the proposed or maybe the proposed use. I can only really just speak to you on the intention of splitting the lot, and it's because we have not been able to sell the building and market the building at the size and price that it is, so we're hoping that in splitting it and gaining more opportunities and more buyers for more better options for the community as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I see that the Administration is indicating that it wants to be heard.
Yes, thank you.
Recognizing the Administration.
Not sure what's going on with this mic. I'll speak as loud as I can. We received conceptual plans and have been in conversations with the legislature and maybe even the person that's interested in the charter school.
So I don't know if you want to comment on that, but that is a possibility, I guess, for a proposal here in the near future. Whether it happens or not, I can't want to for certain say, but it's something that we have received and have been in touch with others about, not necessarily Samir and his colleague here, but definitely have been in conversations with others about it.
Anybody else from the... Sorry, from the Commission on my left? Would you like to be re-recognized?
Yes, please.
Recognizing Commissioner Deanna Stachow Adams.
Yes. And with that knowledge that or the information that was received, this is why I had originally pointed that out as well. Because at that point, we would have had additional questions and concerns if it was to be a possible charter school that would have been in that area. But at this point, if you feel that it's just you're requesting the land split...
I myself personally have not had any conversations with anyone regarding prospective sale or the use. And, you know, I assure you, on behalf of the property owner, the intention is to split it so that we can sell it and we can get more buyers interested. What the use will be, that of course will have to be up to the City of Westland and, you know, your committee and your council. They would have to absolutely file and follow all the rules to make sure that the use is permitted and the use is accepted. But quite honestly, I'm not really involved in what the perspective and what some of the plans may be. Our intention right now, first and foremost, is just to split the building. If that particular use is not approved, then we would still market the building for something that would be approved by the city, of course.
Dr. Hadidi?
Yes. Anything, any sale, potential sale, will be contingent in approval of the usage. So there's nothing, there's no contract that's going to be sold, and then they have to deal with it. They have to get approval for the usage from the city. Once that approved, the sale will happen.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. Commissioner? Did you require the floor?
Then I'll be fine. I can... I'd like to go with a motion, if no one else has any other questions.
Recognizing Ruby Richards. Commissioner Ruby Richards? Oh. Very good, then. Once again, are there any comments or questions on my right? Any comments or questions continuing on my left? Seeing none, a motion is in order?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Stachow, please.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that case number 1051K, proposed land division, southeast corner of Middlebelt and Ann Arbor. And this is to go to Administration, and the Planning Department recommends that this petition be forwarded to the City Council with recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion made by Commissioner Stachow, supported by Commissioner Folks. My apologies. Roll call, please.
Okay, this is the roll call 02, approve case number 1051K.
Duranty?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Swokis?
Yes.
Stachow?
Yes.
Okay. Case is approved.
Very good, then. You'll need to contact the Administration to see the next steps. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Calling case number... Second item on our agenda, case number 1933B, special land use and site plan modification for the proposed marijuana co-located facility at 37800 Cherry Hill, West Newburgh, on the north side of Cherry Hill. Petitioner is Quality Roots Incorporated. This is a public hearing. Administration, can you tell us a little bit about the proposal and the history?
Yes, sure. There's quite a bit here, so please bear with me. The applicant is seeking to modify the previously approved site plan and special land use for the construction of a marijuana co-located facility, which at the time included retail, cultivation, and processing operations. This proposed modification before you today is to remove the cultivation operation, which results in a significantly smaller building footprint that will encompass only retail, majority retail, and some processing. The previously approved building was approximately 49,000 square feet, and the proposed new building is approximately 6,400 square feet. It's a 6.65 acre site, approximately located on the north side of Cherry Hill, between Newburgh and the railroad that you see there on the screen. The property was divided and combined with a couple other properties there, and the result is that irregular-shaped red outlined area on your screen. So that's the subject property. Properties to the north are zoned I1 light industrial. One is vacant, as you can see, and one is developed by a truck parking facility. Property to the south is zoned I2, that's our general industrial. It was another site of a conditionally-approved marijuana co-located business that has dropped out since. Property to the east is zoned I1 light industrial as well and is the site of a conditionally-approved marijuana co-located facility that you approved a similar modification to a couple months ago, maybe not last month, but a couple months ago, I believe. And properties to the west, across from the railroad, are single-family R5 developed by single-family detached dwellings buffered by the railroad. The master plan, future land use designation for this site, is industrial. This is the previously approved site plan. You can kind of see the building there in white with the large footprint, parking around it, drive aisles, and a detention basin here to the north. This is the significantly smaller building without a growing operation here with a detention basin here with compliant required parking here. The site is still accessed by one full-service driveway at Cherry Hill. As I mentioned, complies with the parking requirement, requires 65, provides 65. All landscaping is compliant per the landscaping requirements for the frontage and for the parking areas. The frontage does not have landscaping on it. That's because there's a drain that runs under there, so they're proposing to put the landscaping on the west side of the building, which was agreed upon per the previously approved plan. The building looks like this. I believe it's constructed using stone veneer, some metal paneling, and wood siding. Please correct me if I'm wrong on that when you come up. All of the bulk requirements, not going to read them on the record, but height, lot coverage, setbacks are all compliant with the minimum requirements and far exceed those minimums or maximums. The plan, as I mentioned earlier, includes a stormwater detention basin that will have to be approved and reviewed by Wayne County Engineering. And exterior lighting complies, which includes pole-mounted LED lighting, complies with the lighting ordinance, which requires site lighting not to exceed one-foot candle at the property line. The Administration and Planning Department are recommending approval of this contingent upon the conditions that are in your backup, conditions that were previously approved, conditions that I believe the petitioners, business owners, and property owners are aware of. I'll read them on the record. Number one, a security plan that complies with the marijuana business ordinance must be adhered to and submitted to the Planning Department and Police Department. We do have that on file. The marijuana business licensee continue to abide by the Legally Executed and Binding Community Benefits Agreement, signed and dated June 30, 2022. That's executed, hasn't started to be abided by because there isn't a business that's operational yet. Number three, continued compliance with all applicable local and state laws, including our Westland Marijuana Business Ordinance. Any violation of any state marijuana law shall be deemed a violation of our city business ordinance. Number four, all signage and advertising must comply with the Marijuana Business Ordinance. We have separate regulations for marijuana business signage, which the petitioner is aware of. Number five, hours of operation to the public be limited between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. That's part of the Marijuana Business Ordinance, and the petitioner is also aware of that. That's all I have. Petitioners here able to answer any questions, and I can answer any questions about my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so the public will, of course, have an opportunity to speak on this matter. At this time, I'd like to hear from the petitioner. If the petitioner can rise and come to the podium for me.
Good evening. My name's John Vitale. I'm with the firm Stuckey &amp; Vitale Architects. We're located at 27172 Woodward Avenue, Royal Oak, Michigan. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. We've worked very closely with the planner and the consultants, complying with every aspect of the ordinance and everything that we possibly could do to be in compliance. We very carefully landscaped the property. It's well-screened. We're paying very close attention to the lighting requirements. The lighting is all compliant in terms of zero-foot candles at the property line and so on. And the exterior materials of the building, it's about a 6,000-square-foot building. We have masonry, exterior composite panel, and some architectural metal panels. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Was there anything that you wanted to add to the presentation by the Administration before we have the citizenry comment?
No, I think he did a pretty good job of telling the history and the project, and I don't think I have anything else to add to that.
Very good. Well, we'll call you back up after we receive comments from the citizens.
All right, thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask if there are any people in the audience, citizens in the audience, that would like to speak on this matter to rise to the podium. Anybody on my right would like to speak on this matter? Anybody on my left? Please, rise to the podium.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Cheryl Frost. And I am the resident that backs up just west of the tracks. The entire area west of the tracks that this building would be near is all in the family. It's been in the family since 46, 1946. It's our last piece of wooded area. And with this building coming in, being built there, we're going to see the lighting. The traffic is going to be horrendous. It is already. Today, just to get here, it took us 10 minutes to turn left off of our street, North Seibald, to turn onto Cherry Hill. I don't know what it's going to do once this is all there. You know, we're not a lot of residents because it's just us, just my family. But we're completely against it. I'm not going to be able to sit on my deck anymore and watch the deer run across, the foxes, all of the animals, because this is going to take away from it. And when there's so many other areas, just right across the street, that has no wooded area. It's all open land. And we're just not happy with it.
Thank you very much. Noting, Ms. Frost...
Yes, we did send a letter, also.
We did receive your email, and I checked in study session, and almost all of our members have read your email. Thank you very much for your attention. Once again, returning, anybody to my right wish to speak on this matter? Anyone on my left wish to speak on this matter? Sir, please rise to the podium and identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Gary Pack, and I live on the other side of the railroad track from the proposed facility, like Ms. Frost. One of my concerns is that they will, at a later date, try to put in this grow facility, which was originally going to take up so much more room. Is that something that's still on the table? Even though right now it's off?
I believe the Administration can directly respond to that.
Oddly enough, you asked that question earlier, so...
I did, because I like to think ahead.
So the way that the approval was previously granted, they can build that building that I showed earlier? The 43,000-square-foot building with the grow? So they're asking today to reduce it down to 6,300 square feet without the grow?
6,300 is not that bad, but the larger building would just be an absolute eyesore from everybody who has property along that sideline.
I understand, and I want to be very, very clear about the statement. This proposal has already been before this board, and it's been before the City Council. A larger building with the grow facility has already been approved. They could go forward with that floor plan... What we're uh what we're here, what is before us today is a smaller building that would take up less space and do less uh be less intrusive to the uh to the to the to the uh to the it would have less of a footprint. That's what's before us today. If we did not approve this, of course, they would still have the uh the prior approval that they uh that they don't necessarily want to do that would be larger.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, returning to uh my right, anyone? Citizens' comments on my left, anyone? Seeing none, uh I will turn it over to the uh to the commission. Is there anybody on my right wish to speak on this matter? Recognizing Deborah Fox.
I was just thinking, uh, like the the um person that came up earlier about sitting in your backyard and enjoying everything. Would the addition of just making this a smaller facility, would that cut down some of the lighting in the back, do you think?
Uh, I think we're going to need the uh the petitioner to to address that. If you could if you could please rise and and be available at the podium, I'm pretty sure that uh your firm would uh would have the answer to that question. Is that correct?
Yes, I think so. Um, yes, the smaller footprint definitely uh would reduce the amount of lighting. We've reduced the size of not just the building, but the size of the parking lot. And in addition to that, all the lighting is shielded, so uh it's a shielded type fixture, directed light. There's no light that's directed out to the uh beyond the property line. So uh we meet the ordinance in terms of the amount of light that's shining down. And we've actually, in part of the packet, provided a photometric plan that demonstrates the actual foot candles at every every area of the entire property that's being developed. So you're you're right. Actually, we're only uh lighting the part that we're physically building on. So there's still additional land. There's about a seven-acre parcel. So there's land that's untouched, that's even buffered between the development area and the adjoining property.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Fox, do you require the floor? Very good. Anybody else on my right wish to speak on this matter? Anybody on my left wish to speak on this matter? Recognizing Commissioner, Stachow.
Okay, uh, yes, uh, through the chair to administration.
Um, on the concern of the residents here, is there uh any possibility that there could be some type of traffic control as far as a light or no right or left-hand turns or something that would aid of the situation uh so that uh they would uh wouldn't have uh as much of a problem if there would be one?
The resident lives on the west side, so you could not prohibit right turns out of the facility. You could potentially discuss left turns with the petitioner. Whether a light is appropriate there or not, that would be a call for engineering, whether they would even want to study it or not. I I can't make that call.
Okay.
It's it's someone said it's too close to the existing light, and I think that's true. But I I'm not an engineer, so I cannot make that call.
Ms. Frost, please, we we do need to keep order in the uh in the uh the meeting. If you wish to be re-recognized, I can re-recognize you, but comments from the uh from the seated position, I I can't allow. Thank you very much.
And uh through the chair, I have another comment.
Please, continue.
Okay, thank you. Um, also, too, uh, in the event that um uh you're uh say, say, for example, you had a power outage there. Uh, what about your ventilation? Uh, what type of setup do you have in regards to uh controlling any type of flow that would come out of the uh building in case uh you would have a power outage? What would be uh your response to that type of uh in incident?
Well, um, if you're referring to.
I'm sorry, sir, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Uh, if you're I'm sorry, if you're referring to a grow facility, that's sometimes where, you know, odor control is really put in place in a cannabis facility, but this is not a grow facility, so it's a retail facility. So most of the product's packaged, and there's no odor uh generally omitted. You want to add to that?
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening. Good to see you. Um, my name's Craig Ernoff. I'm the regulatory and licensing counsel for Quality Roots. Um, and to answer your question, Commissioner, um, this type of retail setting and this footprint with even the the processing facility that's going to be included in the processing facility that's along with it in the co-located. This is intended to be more of a distribution hub, and just everything will be packaged in in vaults while it's in the store. And and during the daytime hours, it's in, you know, it's sitting behind the counter. Nothing's where customers can get to it. Everything is done with CRA regulations, our Cannabis Regulatory Agency, monitors, all of that. And these facilities are don't really have an odor or odorous smell outside of the walls of the facility, given what there's what's being done. If it was the grow and the larger footprint, then there'd be all sorts of mitigation for odor mitigation as required by your ordinance. And so that was all in the original plans as approved, and now we're downsizing and actually downsizing the activity of of this lot as well.
Okay, yeah, because that's the part I was thinking about, is actually packaging it once you receive the merchandise, if that would have any problems.
Yeah, it's already all in packages from the vendors that send it to this site. And so this is going to be a place where we're going to order in bulk distribution, you know, bulk products from um, you know, fifty units in a box that are all gummies in packages already. So they're individually then laid out, you know, for their team to distribute to customers as as their purchase. But the products are actually already in opaque packaging, already in odorless packaging from the various uh operators that are growing and selling other products in the state.
Okay, I think I asked you the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, please. I think I asked you one other time, too. Uh, is this going to be solely recreational, or is it um it uh for medicinal purposes also?
Well, I I believe the facility will actually be licensed for both. Um, whether or not there's actually medical activity there is related to the fact that there is about a one percent market for medical relative to ninety-nine percent adult use in our interstate right now. I think last month it was two hundred and seventy thousand or two hundred and seventy million dollars to like seven million in total sales from adult use to medical. So what limited they'll be, they'll be available, but.
All right, thank you.
I also just want to touch on one thing. This is Michael Clark, uh owner and chief investment officer of Quality Roots. Uh, regarding the site as well, which we understand the layout of the site, I just want to mention that we did try to locate the building furthest to the east part of the parcel, um, because we understand some of that. Um, you know, we there's still a bunch of land that will be untouched to the west of where the building's located. So I just want to call that out, too, because we understood uh some of the layouts with that property as well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Do you require the floor anymore?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, very good then. Uh, is there anybody else on my right, or sorry, on my left that wishes to speak on this matter? Anybody on my left wish to speak? Recognizing Commissioner David Swolkes.
Just as a point of clarification, so you're going to be doing somewhat limited packaging?
Is that my understanding?
Yeah, the processing facility, the way the licenses work, can be from an intense use of actually creating oils and creating products to a light use of just creating an inventory hub, more like an Amazon distribution, where packages come in and get redistributed to other stores. What Quality Roots's plan is to do amongst their other, you know, eight operating facilities in the area, use this as a West Detroit kind of hub for its inventory.
So to just so I'm understanding, so you're going to receive this, and it's already prepackaged, sealed?
Yep.
You're not going to open these packages, per se, you're basically going to take them and say, put them in your own kind of like bag or using your own labeling or logo or whatever. Is that the kind of purpose of the packaging?
Yeah, here, I'll talk to them. So as Craig alluded to, this would be our actually our ninth development here in the cannabis space here in Michigan. So especially where all of our stores are located, which is here in the tri-county area, we felt the need to have a, like Craig said, a distribution hub for our own internal stores, right? So our other stores are just retail, so at the retail stores, there's nothing like that going on there. Whereas here, we're able to use this space to our advantage to be able to distribute out to the rest of our stores, making that that hub. In regards to that, these aren't, you know, massive trucks coming to the site and picking up, you know, massive, massive loads. These are Sprinter vans that come up once, maybe three, four times a week, that come and distribute to our stores. So it's not constant traffic for for that.
Do you have like a proposed time when usually you would receive deliveries? I know just, you know.
Yeah, we try to, yeah, we try to receive deliveries at the, you know, non-peak hours, right? Uh, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesday mornings potentially, but.
So non-peak, non-peak for you, what would that be considered, you know, just so the residents understand?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, typical retail business, right? You see, you see stores kind of slow down on on Sunday nights. Mondays, Tuesdays are a little bit slower, and then you see kind of see it pick up a little bit towards more of the weekend.
So would you be, say, receiving your shipments like a lot of stores receive, early morning or late evening? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, there, yeah, we try to do early morning on non-non-peak days, for instance. Like, we're not, we're not sending our truck there on a Friday at six o'clock.
Okay, and then just to go back to Commissioner Stachow's question, I mean, it's good that, you know, you you uh, you know, that you're taking all of these steps. And I think that's good because, you know, it is a legitimate concern for residents. But back to her question about, you know, power failure, I mean, I think we know that there are power failures with things happen like that. And just for your own business security, and just so that, you know, you're not incurring a lot of police runs so the power goes out. Do you have plans like for a generator?
Yeah, yeah, so one thing we do at all of our facilities currently right now, there is a generator and as well backup generators. Uh, per the state, we actually have to have our security cameras running at twenty-four seven, so if there is a case of a power outage, those click on right away due to the generator. Um, so yeah, that we have to plan for that either way for the for the state.
Okay, great. I I think I'm pretty satisfied.
Very good. Thank you very much. Um, is there anybody additionally on my right wish to speak? Anybody additionally on my left wish to speak? Uh, I have a few, well, I have a few concerns, questions. Obviously, obviously, the the uh the commission is concerned with the uh with the recent disaster out in Clinton Township. I'm sure you are as well. Uh, that was a vaporizer situation. Did you, well, could you speak for just a moment on on your personal concerns as a business owner with regard to uh to security measures that that you plan to uh to institute, if any are appropriate?
Yeah, so I think, you know, difference from us, we don't plan on any having big machinery or anything like that that's that's being involved on site. This is a typical retail store, um, that has registers, display cases, and customers walking in and out. Um, on a security basis, I I would say that at all of our stores, we have more cameras than we actually need, right? From three sixty to corner angles to outside, uh so on and so forth. Um, and of course, what we do is our staff are actually security, right? So they are trained to know the ins inside and outside of our store rather than going through the third-party model, which that person would know what's going on inside, so.
Thank you very much. Now, it is not my intention in any way, shape, or form to uh to disparage any other uh marijuana business in any other uh in any other jurisdiction. However, uh, I have seen some that I uh that I don't like the look of personally. Uh, they use floodlighting, security gates, security stands, uh uh and and also there's a there's a uh one that I could mention that my family's brought to my attention, uh that shares a wall with a uh with a with a professional building, and when you're in the professional building, uh it's a some without being too obvious as to the as to the use, uh, it's some version of a medical uh office, and you can smell the uh the the marijuana smell through that wall. Uh, and I know that there are uh that that there are community members in the audience and that are as concerned as I would be about uh about marijuana odor and the long-term effects of of marijuana odor that we may may know or may not know. And I'd I'd like at least a a brief discussion about that.
Yeah, I'll I'll let Craig speak more on that, but I just want to say, as an operator's standpoint, uh, it is absolutely our rule as a company and the state's rule that there is no consumption happening on-site whatsoever. Um, even in regards to the product as being out, it is paper-clipped and sealed, right, to the customer? So we really want them opening up even in the in the parking lot. Um, you know, of course, not using the product in the parking lot as well, right? But Craig, if you want to talk to you more on that.
Yeah, and speaking with different examples, um, you know, a building that's already in existence with whatever thin walls it may have that may not have odor resistance between drywall and whatever this new use is next door, I think is not comparable to a standalone built from ground up building that's sitting, you know, in the woods to some degree, you know, it next to other commercial buildings. Separately from that, you know, Quality Roots has done this, as as Michael has said, we have, you know, nine other facilities. There, we already know what the footprint is. We already know what we're they're able to do. This is not a one-off, first-time effort at this. This is a very experienced operating group that has successfully brought their products and their their brand to different markets already. And they're excited to be in Westland, and that's why we're continuing through this process. Um, I want to address the question about what happened with that select, though, just so it's on the record. That was not a regulated facility. That had nothing to do with Michigan's cannabis regulatory industry. What that was was an industry was something in Clinton Township that was feeding gas station kratom and getting tobacco stores and things that were not related to the Michigan marijuana markets. That do have a regulatory agency that oversees it, that's both the Bureau of Fire Services from the state and the regulatory agency itself, that come in with inspections on a regular basis. And the credentials and the requirements of these facilities, the one that was approved as built for that forty-five thousand square feet, all of the protections prevent anything to occur like that are in these facilities that justify this kind of investment. What those guys were doing in Clinton Township that doesn't have an authorizing ordinance, that is not part of the cannabis industry, and we're probably doing things that were not necessarily the use that was permitted to begin with, is not comparable. And I just want to make sure that our industry doesn't get the black eye that that may have caused, because it's not warranted under the circumstances. We appreciate the question and the need to justify it and have the opportunity to speak publicly about it. But one is an apple, and the other is a pear or orange or some other, maybe it's maybe it's not even a fruit. So, thank you.
To be very clear, a lot of times I ask questions just so that you have an opportunity to assure our to assure our public that uh that we we do have before us professional operations that 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 do desire to be good neighbors.
Absolutely.
Um, the uh, the last thing I wanted to uh to speak on before I uh before I call for a vote on this matter is I wanted to take a moment to uh review what we did actually discuss the last time that uh that this petition for this use was before us. We did examine the uh the possibility that that there was protected wetlands, and there wasn't. Uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, or if there's any more detail that you'd like to have.
We've gone through Eagle and played a bit, but I'll let John in there.
I believe that uh that we also examined whether uh whether an environmental impact was was taken up. Uh, I believe we uh we discussed whether there would be appropriate shielding for light for the uh for the neighboring properties. Uh, we and the I, once again, I'd like a brief commentary just to uh just to make sure that the record is up to date. Uh, but we we did, the the board did exactly what we are supposed to do, and we did, in fact, uh vet this proposal to make sure that although we cannot deny somebody the uh the appropriate use or reasonable use of their property that they own, we can actually make sure that they uh that they uh that they do conduct their uh their affairs as good neighbors. And as is uh as is evidenced by our prior recommendation for approval, we were satisfied at that time that you were uh that you were presenting yourself as a uh as a responsible and professional organization. So, that being said, I would like to give you guys an opportunity to uh to speak to those concerns.
Yes, uh, good evening. My name is Eric Fix, with Show Stack Brothers, uh, project manager. We do have a um a letter from Eagle, um, who has um determined this uh site to be non-regulated. Um, I don't know if you can bring up the the site plan again, but that um a regular shape just to the north of our building, that one is, yeah, that one right there. That was what we were having investigated by Eagle as being a wetland. Again, they determined it was not. We are taking the proper um precautions and uh with our site plan here tonight to have that proper buffering between uh the potential wetland and our building and our development in case Eagle ever changes their mind in the future and says it is regulated. So we're staying out of that area, knowing that Eagle may someday down the road change their mind on its. change their mind on its, on its status.
Thank you very much. And, uh, I would personally like to, uh, to thank, uh, the owner of the property for, uh, for the, uh, taking steps. I, I do recognize that you did take steps to minimize the, uh, the amount of impact by the location of the actual facility. Uh, I, I find that to be, uh, quite, quite an appropriate, uh, measure, and thank you for it.
Yeah.
In the event that there is anything that you can do to alleviate the concerns raised by, uh, by Ms. Frost, uh, this is exactly what this forum is for. This forum is for the, uh, for the citizens to raise their concerns and for you to be able to hear them.
Yep, no, I appreciate those kind words. Uh, we are friendly neighbors. I think, uh, you can definitely ask everybody that's around us in regards to just being in the community in general. Uh, so Mrs. Frost would definitely be open to a conversation. And, uh, I can trust that we'll be, uh, right on the same page with everything. If there's any concerns, I can give you my direct number all the time. Appreciate you guys, thanks so much.
Thank you very- Thank you very much. At this time, a, uh, motion is in order. Re- recognizing, uh, Commissioner Richards for that motion.
I move to close out case number 1933B, special land use and site plan modification for proposed marijuana co-located facility at 37800 Cherry Hill, west of Newburgh, on the side, the north side of Cherry Hill, Quality Roots Incorporated, and sent to City Council for me- recommendation for granting approval of the special land use and site plan modification contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations and subject to the, um, contingencies listed.
Please waive the normal rules.
Okay, yep, and I waive the, uh, normal rules.
Very good, then, is there a second?
Support.
Motion made by Commissioner Richards, supported by Commissioner Swokis. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve case number 1933B, Durante.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Swokis.
Yes.
Stachow.
Yes.
Case is approved.
Very good, then, congratulations, gentlemen. Uh, please, uh, contact the administration to, uh, to discuss what, uh, what your next steps are. Thank you very much. Moving on to our third item on the agenda, case number 2263, Land Division at 2203 Emerson North Wayne, Norway neighborhood. Uh, the petitioner is in fact, uh, the administration. If, uh, Mo can tell us anything about this?
Uh, thank you. You might also remember this one coming before you, I believe in December. Uh, it was proposed to be, um, three, God, I think it was 50-foot wide parcels. After a conversation with Community Development, who was going to be building two, uh, well, wanted to build three houses on the three 50-foot wide parcels, we had a conversation that those are too small. Um, and essentially, Community Development agreed and is now proposing, uh, two 60-foot wide parcels, shown on your screen there, separated by the red line. And then there's, I think, about a 30-foot, uh, 29-foot wide parcel, uh, there at the bottom. And that will be combined with the park property, uh, if this is approved. Um, so we're essentially just adjusting the split that was previously approved. Um, I hope that makes sense. If it doesn't, happy, happy to go over it again. The administration and Planning Department are, um, recommending approval. The Assessing Department requires a condition, uh, as part of this approval, that parcel three, which is that 29-foot wide parcel, uh, be combined with the city-owned park. That parcel's listed there in your staff report. And that is just to make sure we're in compliance with the zoning ordinance and Land, uh, Division Act. Uh, happy to answer any questions, thanks.
I assume that the, uh, that the administration, being the petitioner here, is reserving their, uh, their judgment as to whether this is recommended for approval or not?
Uh, sure, yes.
That would be very ethical. Uh, at this time, is there anybody on my right that wishes to speak on this matter? Anybody on my left that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll, uh, turn it over to the commission. Anybody on my right wishes to speak on this matter? Anybody on my left? Recognizing Commissioner Stachow.
Uh, through the chair, to administration. There were several, uh, large, uh, trees on the property. Not several, but there, I think, two, three of them. Uh, were you planning on cutting those down or, uh, what was going to happen with the landscape there?
Um, majority of the trees are in the back along the property line, and I think those will stay, probably be trimmed. Um, there are, you're right, a few trees sporadically spread out through both of those properties. And yes, those will have to be cut down for development of two homes. Um, there will be some trees planted along the, uh, well, in, in the public right-of-way along the street, uh, which is a requir- requirement for single-family development on a single-family lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody additionally on my left? And still nobody on my right? Very good, and motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'm sorry? Recognizing, uh, Commissioner Stachow for that motion.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to bring case number 2263, proposed land division, uh, 2203 Emerson Norway neighborhood, city of Westland. And this is, uh, the administration and Planning Department recommend that this petition be forwarded to the City Council with recommendation for approval and contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations con- uh, conditions upon parcel three being combined with parcel 56074061208001, which is, uh, a city-owned park.
Motion by, uh, Commissioner Stachow, supported by Commissioner Hopkins, roll call.
Roll call, vote to approve case number 2263, Durante.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Swokis.
Yes.
Stachow.
Yes.
Your motion is approved.
Moving on to, well, our fourth item on the agenda, the fifth item having been withdrawn, is case number 1359D, site plan approval for proposed gas station addition. I believe that's a, uh, that's an error, is that correct? The gas station addition?
It is a gas station addition.
Oh, it is a gas station addition.
Yes, sir.
At 35336 Ford Road, northeast corner of Wayne and Ford. Uh, petitioner is Mohammed Rafi. Administration, can you please tell us a little bit about the petition?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the subject property is located at the northeast corner, uh, Ford Road and Wayne, which you've mentioned. Uh, it's outlined on the screen in yellow. Uh, it's an existing gas station. The property's owned CB4 Vehicle Service. Uh, the applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a 231-square-foot addition, uh, in the rear, um, to the existing 1,665-square-foot fueling station. The addition is to be used for a small storage area. Um, this is what that addition looks like. It's similar to a rectangle and layout. And just sort of adding onto that, uh, let me see here, back corner there, over here. Hope you can see that. Um, okay. Anyways, the property to the north is owned CB4. Uh, it's part of the Todd Wenzel Auto Dealership Parking Lot. Property to the east is the Todd Wenzel, I believe it's Auto Wash, uh, but also part of the Todd Wenzel dealership. Property to the south here, CB3, that's Octapharma, uh, Bl- Plasma Donation Center. And to the west, uh, also CB4. Uh, it's an auto, uh, repair facility. Uh, the site is feature land use, use plan, calls for community commercial. Um, not really much to say in terms of site modifications. Everything's staying the same. All of the curb cuts are staying the same. Um, all of the bulk requirements, there was a mention of the rear setback. That's really the only impact there. The required setback is 25 feet and proposed is, uh, 33 feet, so that's in compliance. The administration and Planning Department are recommending approval. Can comment more, uh, the staff report if needed. And, uh, I think the petitioner is in the audience, uh, in the back there. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much, administration. Uh, can I please have the, uh, the petitioner rise and, uh, present himself in the, at the podium?
Good evening, my name's Justin Bylick with Jeffrey Scott Architects. I'm here with Marsha Hornig, as well as Sakib Nahamud, who is a nephew of Mohammed Rafi. And we appreciate you hearing this for us. We're proposing a 200, a little bit over a 200-square-foot addition on the backside of this gas station. It is not encroaching any further than the existing building onto the back, uh, property. Um, the, the building owner, Mohammed, he's wishing for this addition to increase his salability of his products and for a little bit of additional storage. Um, there's some coffee stations being added and things like this.
Thank you very much. Is that, uh, is that all you, you have to share for, with us at this time?
Yep.
Very good. Uh, I'm gonna have you temporarily have a seat and probably bring you right on back up. We seem to have cleared out our, uh, our, uh, audience. Uh, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on, to this matter on the right? Anybody on the left? Seeing none, I will, uh, pass it over to the, uh, to the commission. Uh, anybody on my right wish to speak on the matter? Recognizing Commissioner Durante.
Currently, you have, uh, trailer on site selling hamburgers?
A portable, um, restaurant? Okay, I'm not sure of that.
Which is taking up part of your parking places.
Okay.
So what are we gonna do to, about the parking places that you're losing because of the trailer? And it's been there for a long time, the trailer.
Uh, Sakib, are you familiar with the, um, the portable food truck that's on site?
Yes.
Is that the All-American Burger?
Yes, it is a food truck, uh, on the, on the site. Actually, I'm not the owner, I'm a nephew. He's on vacation, so I'm just being, so whatever is a recommendation from the board or whatever has to be done, or we will do, or I pass to him, what is to be done, we'll do it.
Okay, I just-
I can comment.
I'm seeing more and more of these trailers in a lot of parking lots. And I think we need to address that some way.
I could, I could speak on it a little bit if you'd like, Chair.
Uh, well, seeing as how we, we have had this discussion in the, uh, in the, uh, in the master plan revision, uh, committee that we are, uh, the, the steering committee, I would love it if the administration can, uh, can share with us a vision for, uh, for this sort of business moving forward.
Yeah, actually, I, I think it's also deviated since then. The City Council has expressed concern with all of the food trucks that are operating throughout the city, um, some of which are licensed, some of which are not licensed, some of which are, uh, obtaining electricity, electricity in a non-licensed fashion from businesses that are existing. Um, so there is a code amendment that is being looked at by the Attorney's Office and internally that the Planning Department drafted. And, um, once it gets approved by the council, if it gets approved by the council, there, there will be enforcement that is done, um, in relation to that ordinance. Uh, but it has been a concern as well brought up by, uh, the City Council. Uh, I will say that the existing food truck ordinance does not allow, um, a food truck or a transitory food unit to be placed at a facility where there is required parking that is being displaced. And it sounds like this is a case where that is happening. So I think it, it is appropriate to do what you wish with that information.
Thank you very much, administration. Uh, I, I'm recognizing that our petitioner would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, Sakib, just inform me of the location of the food truck is not in the area of the existing parking that I can see.
It is in the corner, and that, that's not a parking spot. Parkings are on both sides of the building. And, uh, this, uh, current food truck is not on the parking spot.
Yeah, I-
And, and I'm sorry, and I'd like to mention also on the ASP 1 sheet, we do have the total parking spaces listed out, and we have more parking spaces than are actually required. So they are not using up any of the parking spaces.
I, uh, I appreciate the, uh, the comment. If I can clarify, and hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn, uh, the, uh, the concern from the committee is, is more of a logistical concern than a, uh, than a statutory one. Uh, the, uh, the, the food truck does displace a significant amount of, uh, traffic area, traffic flow area. And they're, they are concerned that it, uh, that it is compromising some of your parking. Not taking up those spaces, but certainly creating a, uh, creating a hazard that wouldn't be there if the, uh, if the, uh, if the food truck were, were in a more, uh, in a, in a less confined bottleneck area. However, uh, I do know that, uh, that we in the, uh, the, the, uh, the steering, the, the master plan steering committee, we are looking into the possibility of a, uh, of an organized food truck area where they could all, uh, congregate and, and not be a concern in any way, shape, or form and, and, and be in one location. And we would consider that to be a draw to the city. Uh, we, we certainly don't want to express a, uh, a displeasure for the, uh, for the service that's offered by those trucks. Our concern is mostly for citizen's safety. And, uh, of course, the safety of your customers should be very, very high on your list as well. Uh, with that said, is there any additional comments on my right? Recognizing, uh, Commissioner Fokes.
Yes, petitioner, you, uh, mentioned that the addition would be for storage, and you also said it would be for coffee house. Could you explain that?
On the floor plan that's shown, there's a new coffee stand area to the left. And the new bathroom is remodeled. And the back of the area is for storage with some new coolers at the side on, uh, ASP 100.
Okay.
So it is, it is a combination of storage and display.
Okay, so that would be for your employees or, or is that open? I can't tell, but is that open?
Well, the, the, the drinks area is for, it's open for the customer use.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, anybody additionally on my right? Recognizing Commissioner Swokis.
Just to understand, um, you know, I think you have a great business and I think it's in a great location. And, um, I share the same, you know, concerns with Commissioner Durante about just when you have, you know, a, a proper flow already in a very dense corner that has some impediment to safety and that, that, that's a concern that I have just because, you know, I have a, I have a senior citizen mom. She could be, you know, pumping her own gas and, you know, government, you know, you're walking across and somebody's zooming to go to a, to a truck there. What do you, what can you, um, tell us that you could do to make sure you correct that? Because I drove past there today and it was, it definitely sticks out and it impedes a good flow of traffic and whether it's pedestrian or automobile, you know, that provides for safety. Because like I said, you're already on a very dense, highly-trafficked corner that is subject to, you know, a lot, many accidents, people running lights, things like that. I just want to make sure that we're protecting not only your business, but we're also protecting citizens, people going to the food truck and that. In the meantime, until we, you know, maybe get a new ordinance or a new spot for food trucks, what do you propose that you're going to do to kind of take care of that?
To explain the food truck and the parking location. Parkings are on the, both sides of the buildings. Any customer who comes in for, just for the food truck, they cannot just pull up to the food truck. They have to park on the side of the building and then walk up to the food truck. They have to park on the side of the building and then walk up to the food truck. So I don't see a lot of traffic going toward the food truck. And also, the distance between the food truck and, uh, gas pumps, gas dispenser is, uh, a lot more. And, uh, I don't, whoever is walking toward the food truck is not on the way of the cars who's getting a gas at the dispenser gas pumps or anything like that. But on top of that, is there, if there is any recommendation from you guys, we will definitely go ahead and do it.
I guess what I'm looking for is, I'm looking for you as the petitioner. You're asking us to, you know, to, you know, approve this addition. What are you as the, you know, I don't make, I don't think it's our part to tell you what to do. We're asking you, what will you do to provide extra safety in the meantime? Because I'll be honest with you. Um, yesterday afternoon, I, uh, I parked across the street and I kind of watched because that's kind of one of the things that I've watched. And around lunchtime, it gets pretty heavy because you have quite a number of people from the industrial park that's down Ford Road that come that way to get food for their lunch and that, and I think it's a great service. I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just looking at safety. What are you, are you, do you think, is there a better place you can move it for better traffic flow? Or is, you know, what are you willing to do to provide safety not only for your business, but for the customers and residents of the City of Westland?
Hi, I'm Marsha Horning, I'm also with Jeffrey Scott Architects. Um, and I think for where the food truck is right now, and we can certainly look at, you know, if there is a better location on the site. Um, I know that between the, between the first pump and Wayne Road, that, that side, that we have a large area there for access drive. So if that's something that we could possibly, you know, get the food truck closer and possibly maybe do some cones or something like that for, you know, since it's not a permanent, permanent item, is to just alert people that they're, you know, that they're walking across, something like that, maybe some, maybe some signage or something like that to just maybe make people aware that there's gonna be crosswalks.
So saying, if you did do that, and I think that's good, I appreciate that you're, you're, you know, you're looking to, to work with us and we're looking to work with you. How soon could you implement something like that? Because I'll be honest, it, it was a concern.
Okay.
When I watched it, and then I just kind of drove past a little bit after too, and it wasn't bad, but it's still out there. And like I said, I share Commissioner Durante's concern that, you know, you're already on a very extremely dense corner.
Correct.
You need to have the best optimal flow of foot traffic and vehicle traffic there. You know, because, you know, let's be honest, I mean, how many places have we seen where people have, you know, run through a light and they end up running into a, a corner?
Exactly, yeah, I understand.
You know, that, I, I just want to make sure that we're protecting not only you, but we're protecting citizens and that, and, you know, because, you know, you've been a long-term business in the city, and I, I certainly appreciate that. And I just want to make sure that we do something as soon as possible, you know, and, but how soon would that be? If you could say if you were willing to do that, could you implement something like that? Whether it's cones or whatever, and...
He's on vacation, so we can do something within a couple of weeks.
Yeah, the, the owner is on, is on vacation right now. Um, his uncle and they're on, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I can't reach that high. Um, so I would propose that we, you know, that we look at where that truck actually is and dimensionally on the plan, and just start looking at areas that we could possibly mitigate any cross-traffic or anything like that, that we can make it better. So I think within a couple of weeks, I think we could get a, you know, we could get, um, something implemented that might be better.
Could you put cones out as soon as, by the end of the week or a week from now?
Yeah, I mean, I think cones are, yeah, absolutely.
I'm just looking at, I understand, you know, everybody needs a vacation.
Yep.
You know, but there's somebody ultimately who will speak for the business and run the business while it's taking, something that even if it's temporary, I mean, we're not asking for a permanent fix right now, but something just to, you know, you do something before something bad happens. You know, it's kind of like, you know, when you have a leak, you know, okay, I need to, I need to patch that leak real quick here, and then I call somebody out and fix it, but...
Temporarily, for sure, cones we could get out, you know.
I certainly do appreciate that, and, you know, I, I leave it to the rest of my fellow commissioners what their thought process is.
No, I agree, that can happen, you know, immediately.
Thank you, I appreciate you working with us.
Very good then. I, uh, I believe that Ruby Richards, Commissioner Richards, has asked for the floor. Uh, before I do pass the floor, I, I want to point out, uh, that, once again, we, we, I want to stress, like, I personally, I, I've, uh, I've gone to the, uh, to the All-American Burger. I don't know who currently owns it. I believe, uh, I believe that you're about to get that question asked. Uh, they, they do a good business, and our concern is almost entirely about the safety of that operation and making sure that, that whatever we do, we, we take the appropriate steps, whatever appropriate steps that, that should be taken before somebody gets clipped.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I'm sure you're aware, uh, there's been a, uh, there seems to have been a rash of vehicle on building, uh, accidents of late. Uh, the Walmart's been, uh, been hit by a, by a car. The, uh, the power plant, uh, just off of Cherry Hill has been hit by a car. Uh, just a little bit before that, uh, near Dearborn, uh, Dearborn Heights, I think, uh, tire store got hit by a car, and some lady almost lost her life, but, but for the grace of God, was currently bending down to pick something up when the car went through the, the thing. So, so obviously, this is a very big concern for us, and we, we don't want to be, we don't want to be glib or, uh, or, or, uh, or, or certainly we don't want to, uh, to minimize the, uh, the concern here. And of course, if your uncle could actually watch our, uh, our commentary, these, uh, these meetings are all published to YouTube, so he does have access to them. And we'd love it if he'd spend time and, and, and witness our, uh, our concerns firsthand. So with that, I'd, uh, I'd recognize Ruby Richards for her commentary.
Excuse me, I do have a question.
Uh, Ruby, uh, Ruby had the, had the floor.
Question. Okay, for the nephew, you said that they park at the building and walk to the food truck?
The parking, the existing, existing parking is at the side of the building.
Okay, because when I pulled in the other day, it was cars parked on the side by the food truck. And I mean, I had to literally like kind of swerve and get out their way. So is that supposed to be like that?
By the food?
They were parked by the food truck, it was two cars, yes.
Okay, we can make sure to eliminate that.
So that's not supposed to happen then?
That, no.
Okay.
So we can put a, like, safety cone or whatever, so the cars park with the parking places.
Cause they looked at me like I was crazy.
I think also something that could be done is, is possibly, you know, on the food truck itself, put no parking. You know what, like, uh, right on there is to just no parking near, and maybe work with the, whoever the operator is to get them to understand that, you know, they're, they probably can see it better because they're right there. So is to, for their, operationally, is to notify their customers, you know, hey, you can't park there, or, you know, please wait safely, you know, stay close to the truck, something like that. You know, there could be signage of that, so just kind of can, um, control the flow of people and where they go.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, recognizing Commissioners Stachow and then the administration.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Uh, yeah, my question is, is, well, it does look like it's gonna be a fine addition to your building there. Um, now, from the diagram, I also see that you're going to be getting a, a new cooler, uh, freezer area. Is that freezer area going into, going to be part of your new addition as well?
No, it's actually, um, let me get to the floor plan here. Probably by about two feet. It's, what we're doing is there is, there's existing coolers along that wall that are more of a, um, they're, they're not as permanent, they're more like the, like a coat cooler that you get. Um, but these, this will be more of a permanent, um, cooler that's, that's similar to what the one on the east wall, that, um, it's going to be permanent, built in, um, and adding more doors. And just really cleaning it up, getting a, getting a nice nude look in there, because it, right now, it's, there, there are several, um, two-door coolers, you know, lined up together. This way, we can get, um, cooler, uh, cooler space on the back for inventory as well.
Excellent, sounds like it'd be very beneficial.
Yeah, and, and everybody loves their cooler doors.
Delaying the administration. Uh, recognizing Commissioner Hopkins for the promised question.
Yes, uh, my question is, it, does the food truck belong to you?
No, sir.
It does not?
No.
Okay. That was my question.
Would you, would you disclose who it does belong to? Or, or do you have the ability to, to bring our concerns to them as well?
Of course I can, and I will, but I, the, I don't know the name of the owner, because he deals with my uncle.
Okay, thank you.
But I, you know, I know kind of, uh, he's, uh, paying rent to be there, so, but I don't know who owns the trailer.
Well, of course, our, our, our consideration is exclusively about your, uh, about your addition, but certainly our concerns for the, for the, uh, for the, for the, uh, the food truck, obviously are, are weighing heavy on, on our commission. And we just want to make sure that our, uh, that our concerns get to the right ears, people that can actually do something about it.
Of course.
So, that being said, uh, I'm recognizing the administration.
Thanks. Uh, so, administration and planning department, myself, are still in support of this petition. I'm reluctant to kind of say this, but I pulled up an email that generated all of this food truck ordinance amendments, and it actually does stem from this specific food truck, and there will be some ordinance enforcement, uh, due to it specifically because of the overhead line that has been run, uh, for permanent power that is not licensed.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
So perhaps for all of these concerns, um, I, I, I don't, I'm not in a position to make any recommendation or decision, but perhaps it's worth a closer look.
I believe the Chair understands the, uh, the intention of the administration. Uh, and, once again, is there any additional commentary on my, on my right? Any additional commentary on my left? Uh, I will actually weigh in just a little bit on this. I want to make it clear, when I did visit the, uh, the All-American Burger, the burgers were delicious. However, uh, when we left, we had to go around the back of your, uh, of your, uh, of your building to get to the, uh, to get to the street. I am, I am a little concerned with the, uh, with the addition of the, uh, the additional building addition, that that traffic flow is going to become more difficult. So, once again, whether you, well, whether you, you, you want to shake your head at it now or later, what I would like you to do is take a close look at it and make sure that, uh, that you are providing the, uh, the safest and best options. And with that, I will recommend to whomever does make the, uh, the motion, uh, for approval or disapproval, that this, uh, that this approval be contingent upon the, uh, upon a, uh, a, an acceptable resolution to the food truck issue, uh, as approved by the administration under, uh, under their, uh, their requirements and recommendations that we normally do, uh, condition these upon. Uh, recognizing that the, uh, the petitioner has something to, to, uh, to add before we call this to a vote.
You, you're expressing concern on the flow of traffic at the rear of the building with the addition?
Uh, I found it to be a little bit tight already.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we just want to understand your, your worries.
The, the, the space, the, the building size is only 12 feet and so many odd inches, and it's not taking up any more space than the previous parking spaces were. So it's not, it's not expanding into the drive, and it's also not to the, to the north, and it's not expanding to the west either, uh, outside of previous parking areas. So the existing drive is going to remain?
It's basically filling in the L of the, of the building that's created that doesn't, there were, there was no traffic in that area now.
Well, as I said, I, I trust the administration and the, uh, and the charge that the administration has for the safety of our citizenry to, uh, to, to appropriately, uh, guide a, a better, uh, a better solution for your, uh, for your food truck operation. And that, that is what I am recommending for whoever makes this, uh, this motion. Uh, is there anything additionally?
Anything?
That being said, uh, motion is in order. Please do.
Appropriate, okay. Um, however you want to phrase this, I believe, conditions worth mentioning would be a closer look by the administration of the drive aisles, uh, the required parking spaces, and the unlicensed power lines related to the food truck, um, and those be satisfied and compliant with, uh, ordinances and regulations. However, however you want to phrase it, or I can just include it in the record.
I believe it has been included in the record. Uh, with that, is there a, is there a motion on my right? Recognizing Commissioner Swokas.
I'll move that the, uh, closed case 1359D, site plan approval for a proposed gas station addition, 3536 Ford Road, northeast corner of Wayne and Ford Road. Subject to the departmental requirements and administration recommendations as noted by the planning director, that includes a, successfully addressing the unlicensed power line, the drive aisles, and the parking, in addition to our comments about providing cones and things for safety, uh, and forwarded on to the, uh, city council for approval. Subject to those recommendations.
Motion by, uh, Commissioner Swokas, supported by Commissioner Richards. Roll call, please.
Just did, sorry for all this commentary. I did want to mention that the council, again, generated this amendment due to the specific location. So that's gonna be a big red flag when you come to the city council, so I would have all of that addressed beforehand.
Do you know when that meeting would be?
Uh, the city council meeting that you will be placed on is, um, the 18th of this month, March 18th.
Okay. I, I just, I feel like it might, I feel like it's very necessary for the, for the owners to, you know, weigh in as well. So I just want to make sure that they're, that we're, we've got the proper representation here for that.
Sure, no problem. Yeah, it's multiple council members, it's not just one.
No, 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 I get that, yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, we are making a motion to approve with conditions listed on the record, uh, case number 1359D. Durante?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Swokas?
Yes.
And Stachow?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. We'll get, uh, we'll get cones out there right away.
Thank you very much. You can contact the administration for the next steps.
We will, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, next item on the agenda is commissioners' comments. We'll start down here. Uh, anything from, uh, from Commissioner Durante?
No, I said no.
Anything from Commissioner Fox? Anything from Commissioner Swokas?
Nothing at this time.
Anything from, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Richards?
No, not at this time.
Very good. Uh, on my left, anything from Commissioner Stachow?
Not at this time, please, thank you.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Not at this time.
Administration?
I'm good. We'll have a meeting next month. Uh, it's loaded with a bunch of car washes, um, and I think there's one other case, maybe? An event, and an event space, so four items. That's all, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, administration.
Thank you.
Uh, for my comments before we adjourn, I do want to commend the, the adminis, the, uh, the commission. This has been a long one and a little bit of a trying one. I think that we did some excellent work today. Uh, I think that we raised a lot of concerns, and I'm very appreciative that, uh, that we all feel, uh, comfortable, uh, raising our concerns with our, uh, with our, with our constituency respectfully. So that having been said, it's awesome seeing you all. And, uh, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Support the motion to adjourn.
So moved?
So moved. All those in favor, please syndicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.